Good evening, everybody. Seven o'clock, let's make a start. Item, Agenda item one, Chairs announcements. Emergency evacuation procedure: in the case of a fire, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the building immediately following the green fire exit signs out to the assembly points, which is by the War Memorial on Duke Street. If anyone requires assistance, please do let me know. Note, lifts should not be used. Please remain at the assembly points and do not attempt to return into the building until you have been advised that it is safe to do so. Facilities. The toilets are situated on the landing at the top of the main stairs which you all came up, and on the ground floor in the customer service centre. Mobile phones, please make sure that they are switched off for the duration of the meeting. With regards to filming of this meeting, anyone attending is entitled to film it, but I should point out that only councillors, officers and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure that cameras are pointed only in this direction. The meeting is also being broadcast via YouTube and is being recorded. When speaking, when speaking, please may I remind the committee to ensure that you turn on your microphone and speak closely into it. A red light will appear on the middle button to indicate that your microphone is switched on. When finished speaking, please remember to turn your microphone off again. Item two on the agenda, apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chair. I've had apologies from councillor Papper and we've got councillor Raven here, something.
Thank you. Item three, declarations of interest. All members are reminded that they must disclose any interests they know they have in terms of business on the meeting's agenda, and that they must do so at this point on the agenda or as soon as possible, or as soon as they become aware. In the interest, it is, if the interest is a disclosable peculiary interest, they're also obliged to notify the monitoring officer within 28 days of the meeting. Are there any declarations to declare? I will start the ball rolling, I have an interest in item eight, I will not be taking part in the meeting and I'll be leaving. The chamber and councillor Dobson will take over as Chair. Any further declarations? I'll go along the line, councillor Tron.
Item eight, I will also be leaving the meeting at that point, thank you.
Councillor Large.
I will also be leaving from item eight.
Councillor Foskerne.
And I also will be leaving for item eight.
Councillor Sampson.
Me too.
Councillor Clark.
I'd also be leaving the meeting for item eight.
Councillor Hall.
I would be leaving for item eight as well.
And do we have councillor Armstrong?
I'll be leaving for the Sandon item as it's within my ward.
Thank you. Just to confirm, would we be core up? Yeah, okay, thank you. Item four, minutes. The previous meeting was the 4th of November, do we, does the committee believe there are correct representation of what we discussed? Agreed, thank you very much. Item five, public question time. We have received a large number of public questions for this evening's meeting for item seven. Note that our usual procedure is to take those questions with the item, so we will get to them, but when item seven comes up. Moving on to applications, the first one we have is 21/01961/Full and 21/01961 Outline, land north west of Hambert's Farm, Burnham Road, South Warden, Feres, Chelmsford. Now, notes, there is no presentation for this item, so we can go straight on to questions or comments or queries from the committee. So does open this up to the committees, are there any questions or queries on this one? Councillor Highland.
Thank you, Chair. So developers never seem to come back and say, we're making too much money and here is some additional affordable homes, S106 or SIL contributions. But they do very often come back with this urgent viability issue, a concern generally brought up at planning permission stage. It would be welcome if we could include in the head of terms or conditions that should viability concern not be found to be an issue over the lifetime of the project, that additional contributions to SIL should be forthcoming from the developers to compensate the city, to compensate the city-funded subsidy being requested today. SIL in my mind is supposed to be used to support infrastructure delivery, not profit margin subsidy.
I'll allow an officer to come back on that, Sally.
Hello, yes, and the section 106 at the moment is not fully drafted because we're just looking at heads of terms at the moment, but we could certainly put a review mechanism in there for that purpose.
Any other questions? One that I would like to ask, I believe I know the answer. This is the first time I've, I believe I've come across where SIL money has been used to carry out section one obligations. I know this went through policy board, but I think I'll ask our legal representative, is this, this has all been signed off, this is above board?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, yeah, this is a matter that the council has sought external legal advice on, and we as legal services are satisfied that it is lawful to do what Cabinet has decided to do. Does that help?
Yes, thank you. Any other questions, comments, queries from the committee? Councillor Large.
Just a comment really, that, I mean, it's always a little bit frustrating when we have viability issues coming back, but I am pleased that the affordable housing is being retained in this one, so that we're retaining that affordable housing element, I think is a really good thing in this case.
I would second that, I think the reason why the SIL money is used to fulfil section 106 obligations is to keep that ratio up, and I think that's the priority of this council to maintain the 35% affordable housing target that we would like, so in that regard, I will bite the bullet and say that that's acceptable, but it's already been decided by policy board.
Any other further questions? No, right, so for this one. I move that the heads of terms of the legal agreement for applications, 21/01961/Full and 21/01961 Outline, land north west of Hambert's Farm, Burnham Road, South Warden, Feres, Chelmsford, be amended as detailed on page 18 of the Agenda Pack, and that the additional condition requiring a public arts provision will be approved. Do I have a second there? Councillor Dobson, thank you. Will all those in favour of amending the heads of terms and adding the condition please raise their hand, you've already beat me to it. I believe that's unanimous, so I won't ask for any against or any in, any abstentions. So that has been agreed and carried, thank you. Moving on to item seven, I'll have to wait for officers to get into their places. So item seven, 25/01046/Full, the old nursery, Butts Green Road, Sandon, Chelmsford, CM27RN. Can I ask the planning officers to introduce their reports? Thank you. Sorry, councillor Highland.
Thank you, Chair. Just before we get the report, I'd just like to clarify, the proposal here seems to be plural rather than singular. It says stationing of caravans for residents' purposes. So is it a single caravan or is it multiple opportunity that the planning application is going forward, I'd just like clarification.
I believe it's one static and one mobile.
It's, it's for one pitch, one static, one tourer, I can address that in the presentation as well, it will be confirmed. Can everyone hear me? Okay, sorry, I'm cautious that I'm having to lean for the microphone for some reason. Thank you, Chair, good evening, everybody. The application site that we are looking at is located in the parish of Sandon, it's to the south east of the village, broadly in that area on that slide in the red circle. Zooming in a little bit on that area, the site is to the south of the junction of May's Lane, Sporeham's Lane and Butts Green Road, the site is outlined in red on your slide. You can see that the site is quite narrow and rectangular in shape and it extends backwards away from Butts Green Road. This aerial image shows you the site, again outlined in red, you can see that within the site there are former polytunnels, you can see those almost in the centre of the site. I would just like to pick up on a few surrounding uses, so the predominant uses in the area is residential dwellings, but you can see in the yellow circle there, there is also a livery yard and a garden centre with a cafe, which is to the north of the site. It's also worth noting as well that there is a tall hedge which is annotated with that green arrow on that slide, I'll come back to that in some photographs in a moment. This slide shows the existing layout of the site, so there's an old track to the south of the site, and that leads to some old polytunnels and a porter cabin with an area of hard standing. And these are some images of the site, so these are taken from the access track which is to the north of the site, so the site is on the left hand side of this photograph, so you can see the bramble and scrub area of the site, polytunnels towards the rear, and then that hedge which was pointed out with the green arrow is on the right hand side of this photograph. This photograph is a bit closer of the remains of the polytunnels. This is the porter cabin, so this is now looking backwards towards Butts Green Road. And this is the access point to the site from Butts Green Road itself. So this drawing shows the proposed development, and I'll just pick up on councillor Highland's point at this section in the presentation. You can see that the development is sited towards the centre of the site in a similar position to the old polytunnels and the porter cabin. The existing access track would be used, as would the existing access from Butts Green Road. And this is a zoomed in part of the plan which shows the main part of the development. There would be one day room, which is a small building which would contain a kitchen and a bathroom, indicative image on the top of the slide there. There would be one static mobile home which is shown in dark blue, and the static mobile home, for those that are not sure of the difference between static and tourer, static mobile home is similar to the one in the middle. And then a touring caravan which is shown in the light blue rectangle, and that is similar to the one on the bottom. So the proposed development is for one pitch, and this plan is showing one static mobile home and one tourer. We are also recommending a condition which would restrict the number of caravans to no more than two, one of which can be static. So it's important to note that whilst the Chelmsford local plan allocates land for the development of Gypsy and traveller pitches, this doesn't prevent windfall applications from coming forward, and this is what we would call a windfall application, the land is not allocated in the local plan for a Gypsy and traveller site, but we can still assess that proposal against our local plan policy DM3. That's what I'm going to briefly run through in the presentation, obviously you've got a much more detailed assessment in your Agenda Pack, but I'm just going to focus on the criteria in DM3 because that's kind of a summary policy which covers all aspects of the proposal. So apologies, this is a little bit texty, but it takes you through the different criteria. So the first criteria in policy DM3 is that the site is not in the green belt unless there are very special circumstances, that is complied with, the site is not within the green belt, it is within the rural area. The second criteria is that adequate community services and facilities are within a reasonable travelling distance, we say the application proposal complies with that. Reasonable travelling distance does not necessarily mean walking distance, it's reasonable travelling distance, and this is a slightly different test to what we would typically look at with some housing proposals, mainly because it is accepted that Gypsy and traveller pitches are unlikely to come forward in the most sustainable locations, for example within the city centre. So we say that is complied with. The third criteria is that the site is of sufficient size to accommodate the proposed number of caravans, again, we say complies, there is sufficient space within the site for, for what is proposed. There is no significant adverse impact on the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside, I would just draw out that those words, significant adverse impact, that's a high test, significant adverse impact, that doesn't mean there can be no impact whatsoever. And we have looked at the proposed development, it's low level and well screened and not spreading, you know, it's tightly located in an area where there is already existing hard standing and those polytunnels and porter cabin. The sites would not lead to the loss of or adverse impact on important historic and national, natural environment assets, again, our view is that the proposed development complies with that, the site has got no tree preservation orders, there's no listed buildings involved. There is no significant risk of land contamination or unacceptable risk of flooding. The site is in flood zone one, which is at the lowest, lowest risk of flooding from rivers and the sea. There are areas of the site which have low and medium risk of surface water flooding, but the proposed developments of the location of those caravans are at the, in the areas of the lowest risk of surface water flooding, and you will have seen that in the conditions, we are recommending a condition for a surface water strategy to mitigate any potential issues, so we're satisfied that the proposed development can comply with that. The site provides suitable living environment for proposed residents and there's no significant adverse impact on the amenity of nearby residents, so again, if you, if you cast your mind back to that aerial image, the proposed development would not cause adverse impact to local residents in terms of overlooking or overshadowing or an overbearing impact, it's relatively contained, there would be landscape screening, and the movements, any noise associated with the proposed development would not be significant, it's one proposed The next criteria is that there would be safe and convenient vehicular access to the local highway, highway network, again, we say the proposed development complies with that, there is no objection from the local highway authority. And finally, essential services such as water, electricity, drainage are available on site or can be made available. Again, you'll see from the report that our view is that they can be made available and we have recommended conditions to deal with those aspects. So our conclusion is that the proposed development complies with the local plan and that the plan-led outcome would be for approval. We do also need to look at material considerations, which I know we've spoken a lot about in the past on other applications. And just going through these, one significant material consideration relates to the need for Gypsy and traveller pitches across the Chelmsford City Council area. So the Planning Policy for Traveller Sites guidance published by the government says that local planning authorities should set pitch targets for travellers, which will address the need in our area. In 2024, we had a Gypsy and Traveller Accommodation Assessment, and that says that for the overall plan periods, so our local plan periods, which is 2023 to 2042, the need for Gypsy and Traveller pitches is 44 pitches, and for the initial five-year period, that is 24 pitches. So far, in terms of our trajectory, we have three pitches which are being delivered or have been delivered, and we have one unimplemented planning permission for one pitch, so that gives us four pitches. And in our local plan review, we are also proposing to allocate sites for a further 30 pitches as part of major development schemes. And then windfall sites, such as this application, are expected to be a reliable source of bridging that gap between the allocated sites and the need. So this means that the council is unable to demonstrate an up-to-date five-year supply of Gypsy and Traveller pitches. Therefore, paragraph 11D of the National Planning Policy Framework, which is known as the tilted balance, is engaged. And that paragraph says that planning permission should be granted unless policies in the framework that protects areas of particular importance provide strong reason for refusing from planning permission, or if any adverse impacts of doing, of granting planning permission would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits. So this is a significant material consideration that we, we need to bear in mind and we need to be assessing and delivering Gypsy and Traveller pitches. Sorry, clicker stopped. So in conclusion, our view is that planning permission should be granted because there is no strong reason for refusing planning permission, and there are no significant adverse impacts which should, which would suggest a refusal of planning permission. So our recommendation is for approval subject to conditions. Thank you.
Moving on to public questions, we have quite a few, as you will be aware, you are limited to two minutes each. In theory, we allow 20 minutes for public questions, but I will allow for longer if need be in this case. Because there are so many, I would like to change it slightly where we have public questions, then back to officers, and then councillors, and over to the officers, so we don't, we don't forget the questions that are coming from the public. So I'd like to invite a Mr Green to make his representation, please, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, I am Nathaniel Green from Green Planning Services and I'm speaking on behalf of our client, Gilbert Anderson, in support of this application. This committee is here to decide the application according to planning law only, and this application is recommended for approval subject to conditions. The application is for the material change of use of land, for the stationing of caravans for residential purposes, the laying of hard standing, and erection of dayroom ancillary to that use. As your officer's report explains in detail, there is a fundamental need in the county that, other than windfall sites such as these, will not be met in the foreseeable future. Chelmsford City Council accepts that there is a requirement over the period of 2023 to 2042 for 71 pitches on the ethnic definition, or 44 pitches under the PPTS definition, and this is likely to be an underestimate. The council cannot demonstrate a five-year land supply of deliverable gypsy sites, which constitutes a failure of policy and is therefore a material consideration that also counts heavily in favour of the application. Worse, the latest GT delivery strategy was published in April 2024 for the period 2013 to 26, it stated that no further delivery was expected after 2024. Additional soft landscaping will be planted within the site to further mitigate effects upon the landscape, the small scale of the development and the recognised need for gypsy site outweigh any impact on the landscape. The effect upon local amenity is considered minimal, the nearest property being screened with significant conifer trees in between. Highways has stated that they have no objection to the application. There are 15 suggested conditions, and Mr Anderson is happy to comply with them, and on that basis, I urge you to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Green. I would just like to state that the planning committee have seen all of the questions that have been submitted, and I trust I have read through them. Mr Mayhew? Thank you.
Thank you. The application for the gypsy pitch does not actually state who it is for, and therefore why the need actually arises. If it is for the applicant, Mr Anderson, there is strong evidence to suggest that he is the licensee and resident of an authorised gypsy site in Oxfordshire, where his current and future needs have presumably been assessed and met under that authority's accommodation assessment process and in line with national policy. Moving on, it is a surprise that the planning officer has determined that the application succeeds in meeting all, and I repeat, all, aspects of the local criteria-based policy DM3 referred to. This outcome is against the overwhelming strength of 112 objections from the local community, many who have been in residence for decades, who unanimously say that it most definitely does not. Furthermore, the officer has dismissed the net worth of the existing planning conditions to maintain horticultural use on this site. That statement implies that the proposal to set 15 conditions, I repeat, 15 conditions, when there's only 10 assessment criteria, to approve this application will also be worthless in time, which diminishes public trust and confidence in the planning process. The application does not meet criteria and should be refused. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr S Smith?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. CCC has previously removed large sheds on nearby alkantral land, so approving residential use with a dayroom would be inconsistent. The dayroom is to reduce fire, we are told, yet thousands cook safely in caravans every day, so what's the real point? Residents fear it may pave the way for permanent structures. Also, the turning space required for a fire engine is three metres short on this pitch, so instead of reducing fire risk, fire risk- So instead of reducing fire risk, fire risk and hazard is actually increased. The officer subjectively calls the road wide without offering any measurement. In reality, it's not wide enough for pedestrians and vehicles to pass without being on the same carriageway. There is no pavement, there's no lighting, the nearest bus stop is over three times the 400-metre guide. The pro, which is footpath 10, is shin-deep mud for much of the year and unlit, so it's not an alternative route. Buses are infrequent, not regular, with gaps in service of 160 minutes. Regular commuting, shopping, or medical appointments would only be practical with a car. From my home opposite, the development would also increase noise, headlight glaze, loss of privacy, and a permanent change to our wonderful rural character. 112 objections have the same view, if that means anything. Drainage has not been addressed. Without foul drainage plan, environmental risk cannot be assessed on this proposal. The conclusion is, or it should be, there is no proven local need, there is no justification that's been provided for Gypsy traveller status for PPTS to even apply here, there is no safe access and no drainage detail. The proposal would not provide suitable living environment and would negatively affect those already here. The officer is subjectively trying to make this fit, not looking at the facts. We ask you to please look at the facts. This application should not be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Smith. Mr Griffith Jones? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. My comments relate specifically to one of the criteria of the slides, no significant adverse impact, and also to section seven of the report concerning precedent. No significant adverse impact on the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside is the relevant test which must be met. Clearly, this is a subjective assessment. Fortunately, no less than 113 people have done that. 112 local residents, who know exactly what we value in Butts Green, have taken the time and the effort to conclude that a static caravan on this site does have a significant impact, not just a visual one, on the character and beauty of the countryside that is our road. And what would be worse than one caravan? Why, two, of course, plus a day centre? Meanwhile, one person, your planning officer, has reached a different opinion. And if local democracy means anything, the views of such a large proportion of the street, I think all the street in fact, must surely be respected by you, the decision-making body, over the submission of a non-resident applicant. On precedent, the report dismisses precedent almost entirely by saying that each proposal must be judged on its own merits. Whilst this statement is, of course, true, it is also a non-secreter. It sidesteps the fact that past developments are hugely influential on future ones. Butts Green Road's residential frontage, which you have not been shown on your slide, only covers approximately 50% of the total frontage of the street, the balance being completely undeveloped fields. It has retained its intrinsic character and beauty only because you, the planners, over many years, have resolutely turned down miscellaneous applications for infill housing and low-level commercial developments. I may say occasionally to the irritation of the residents, but to our greater benefit in the long term. This same application...
Would you like to start summing up now, please?
This same application could have been made for maybe 20 plots of a similar shape along our road, and if you permit this proposal to go ahead, it is opening the way to further developments citing this as a very clear change of policy by the planning authorities. I urge you, please, to reject it.
Thank you, Mr Griffith Jones. Mrs Willis? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Before I start, I'd like to refer the committee to Vicky Cola's report, which is, should be in the agenda papers for more detail on the things I'm going to talk about. Change of use. This is agricultural land, as admitted by the officer. The landowner, we know, is not a local resident. We are being asked to welcome a material change of use from agricultural to residential by an unknown applicant without confirmed GT status or any evidence that there's a local or personal need for this site. We ask the committee to please consider why this change of use should be granted to a non-local and unknown applicant. Paragraph 6.33 of the application's statement states, "The site benefits from reasonable proximity to local services, with Howe Green and Sandon located approximately two kilometres away." Howe Green, as stated, has a very infrequent bus service. There are no doctors, no dentists, no primary school, no shops at Howe Green or Sandon. It would be extremely difficult to live here without the use of a car. The footpaths mentioned leading to the bus stop at Howe Green are unlit, can only be used in daylight. There is access to the park and ride, either by car, motorbike, or an at least 40-minute walk, mainly on single-track country lanes with passing places. The officer's conclusion under 42, adequate community services, says, "The site is not considered to be so unsustainable that it fails to comply with this criteria." This doesn't sound like a positive recommendation, more like, let's make this fit because we'd like to have another GT site. Please don't allow this application.
Thank you, Mrs Willis. Mr Moore? Thank you. Can we start the two minutes at the correct time this time?
Thank you, Chair. The current designation of the plot in question is not PDL, as agreed by the planning officer, but agricultural stroke horticultural, albeit a dated designation which must be reviewed, given the erection of gates on the site which allegedly were installed without agreement and were challenged five years ago. My question or observation is how can this designation be changed when the criteria for this application clearly has not been met on many counts? This has been covered by many objections made, but appear to have been glossed over by planning. What do I mean? Taken from the papers subject to this meeting, this application is not considered to be so unsustainable, as stated prior, that it fails to comply with the criteria set in DM3. It does not meet DM3 as set by the council, you guys. This statement is vague at best. It either meets it or it doesn't. The council has a duty of care to the environment, countryside, and residents, who deserve to be protected from random developments such as the one proposed. The current recommendation by the council appears to totally ignore this point, despite the views of over 100 objections being registered. The council has, when deemed necessary, vigorously enforced agricultural status in other developments and planning rights where local residents have had minor infringements. What is the difference here? Indeed, the planning officer states there would be no adverse impact for a change of character and beauty of the countryside. Old barns and polytunnels are, in our view, preferable to caravans and dayhouses in this case. Lastly, the council states that every application is judged on its merits. What merits does this application have to the environment, to the countryside, and to the residents? This application should be refused.
Thank you very much, Mr Moore. I believe that covers all of the public question times. As I stated before, we will come back to parish and city councillors. I'd like to invite the officer to come back on some of the questions or concerns raised by the public there. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. I'm going to try and take these in order, but I might jump around a little bit. First of all, we have heard that we don't know the specific applicant in mind, and there is a question that's been raised over the applicant and their location and where their needs are being met. There doesn't have to be, in this case, a specific occupier in mind. The application is not determined on the basis of personal circumstances. It's enough to say that the pitch will be for a person or family that meets the Gypsy and Traveller definition. We have suggested a condition which would require that. I think that's all I can really say on that matter at this time. We simply don't need to know the specific applicant or their circumstances. We think the proposal is acceptable without taking personal circumstances into consideration. In terms of location, we've heard concerns about walking, the roads, the footpath, frequency of bus services. The test in DM3, as I've set out, is there needs to be adequate community services and facilities within a reasonable travelling distance. That doesn't mean it has to be within a reasonable walking distance. And as I said earlier, there is the expectation that Gypsy and Traveller pitches are not in the most sustainable locations. But we think this site is within an adequate travel or a reasonable travelling distance of adequate community services, even if that is by private car. That's not unacceptable in this application or in this situation. We have heard about historic planning conditions that restrict the use of the land previously. I'm sure you'll be aware, members of the committee, previous planning conditions do not mean that you can't grant planning permission for something else or some other development. They're simply used to restrict a development. It doesn't prevent an application coming forward, and it doesn't prevent an application from being found to be acceptable. And those conditions certainly don't say that the site can only ever be used for a certain type of development. The restrictive conditions in the past simply say that the development or the site can only be used for certain purposes or not commercial purposes. That doesn't mean that planning permission can't be applied for, which is the case here. Coming on to fire safety, we've heard about the proposed dayroom and there not being a need for the dayroom. Dayrooms are relatively a common feature with Gypsy and Traveller sites. They are usually used for kitchen and bathroom facilities. It's not unacceptable. And the Essex Fire Service have reviewed the application. They didn't raise any objections to it. So we're satisfied that there's not an unacceptable fire risk here. In terms of drainage, the proposal, the application details a proposed package treatment plant at the rear of the site. That would be an acceptable solution to deal with foul water, and we have recommended a condition to require further details of that. So that, in our view, is acceptable. In terms of the issue of precedent, we've said it many times here, committee. All applications are assessed on their own merits, and that is the reason that we have local planning policy, so that we can objectively assess proposals against policy criteria. Just because a development has been found acceptable on one site, it certainly doesn't mean that it will be acceptable on another. Turning to conditions that are proposed. There are 15 conditions proposed, and that's not unusual for proposed developments. It's perfectly acceptable to grant planning permission subject to conditions. And Planning Practice Guidance actually supports the conditions and says that when they're used properly, conditions can enhance the quality of development and enable development to proceed. So, you know, it's fine to have 15 conditions on a planning permission. That's not unusual. Some of those conditions as well relate to procedural matters such as the implementation of a planning permission within three years, the implementation in accordance with the plans, as we spoke about earlier, restriction on the number of caravans, a condition requiring the occupiers to meet the definition, the PPTS definition of a Gypsy traveller. In terms of intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside, it is a subjective consideration. We've made many assessments on whether proposals significantly adversely impact the character and beauty of the countryside before. It is subjective, and people will have different views. But our view on this, given our experience, our knowledge of planning appeals, and our knowledge of proposals and visual impact, is that this is a low-level development, it's relatively contained, and it would be well screened. So we don't think that this is a significant adverse impact. As I said earlier, that is a very high test in planning terms. And just picking up on the level of objection that we've heard about, the number of objections doesn't alter our conclusion. Obviously, there is a consultation period, and we consult and we gather the views of local residents. But we do not make decisions in terms of, as officers, and I would recommend against making decisions purely based on the number of objections that are received. We need to make decisions based on compliance with the local plan, national policy, and material considerations. So whilst all of those representations are considered, the number of them in itself is not a reason for refusal. I believe, according to my scribbled notes, that I have covered everything.
I've got a couple more.
Yep, shout things at me.
No problem. I think it's three of the scribbling notes away here. Mr Smith mentioned the fire engines, the space for that.
Yeah.
And also, do you have any knowledge about, I believe it was Essex, for reference to Essex County Council, removing sheds, I'm not sure?
Oh, yes, sorry. The removal of sheds, again, I don't know the details. I don't know which site, I don't know when planning policies are applied at the time that they are in force. We could be talking a week ago, we could be talking 10 years ago. So I don't know the kind of circumstances of those. So that isn't really a consideration to be had. In terms of fire risk, all I can say is that the Essex Fire and Rescue Service have viewed the access and viewed the proposal, and they have no objections. So we have no sound evidence to say that the proposed development is unacceptable in terms of fire risk.
And one more, Mrs Willis. Can you just confirm this is a change of use from agricultural to residential?
Yes, that's correct. It is a material change of use to the site, to the use of the land for siting of caravans for residential purposes. Yes, sorry. Noise and disturbance. I may have even forgotten to note that down. Yeah, I covered noise and disturbance in the presentation. Essentially, this is one pitch, one family. The trips and the noise and the movements that would be associated with one pitch would not be significantly different to what the site could generate as an active horticultural site or agricultural site. If anything, I would typically say that if land is in full active agricultural use, If anything, I would typically say that if land is in full active agricultural use, the vehicle movements associated with one Gypsy and traveller pitch would probably be less than a fully operational agricultural site. Yeah, just in terms of, sorry, just reminded, in terms of headlight glare as well, that was mentioned, that's a similar consideration in terms of the movements. Again, glare from from movements associated with one pitch would not be harmful in this context and would potentially be less than than what could be with an agricultural site.
Thank you. Moving on to the council of representations, we'll start with the parish council. councillor Cross, would you like to make your representation? You have five minutes, thank you.
Thank you, I'm not going to use all the minutes, mine, this is going to be sharp and brief. Please listen to the local residents' concerns regarding this application. Having read the expert comments and the local facts, facts which are only known to locals, not to officials at head office, this application does not follow MPPF guideline on G and T rules. You all having read these need to decide and may wish to take a site visit to see the problems this will cause. Thank you for listening, and please answer my question.
Thank you. Could you clarify which part of the MPPF that you believe the guidelines aren't followed?
It's on the four or five categories that the officer went through.
Fine, thank you. And councillor Jeeps?
Thank you. I'm just going to briefly cover some of the headline things that people have spoken about, because I think there's still some outstanding issues on on several of the issues. I believe that the reason this site was selected is because of its previous use, and although it's conceded that this is now an agricultural site, I wonder if anything would have been allowed if it had just been a green field? Would we have allowed a building? Would we allow a house to be built here if it hadn't been for the fact that this had previously been a nursery? And I think the answer is, but because it's a Gypsy and traveller site, we are trying to make this fit so that we can have this windfall site, which I think is an appropriate way for planning to be pursued. The purpose of the development is (applause) is out of keeping with the character of the local area. That would be why a refusal would have been given if it had been anything else but what is being applied for. You've heard the evidence of local people who live in this area, and I think a site visit to see whether this would affect it in a way would be the most advisable thing to do. But for the people that live there, they can see that it is not in keeping, and again, I think if we took ourselves away from the need to find sites, this would not be something that would be granted. In terms of environmental damage, there are wild species, I understand, of slow worms, this was in, this was recorded in one of the objections, actually, that's on the portal. I don't know if anything has been done to assess wildlife in the area. Since the nursery has been not in use, clearly it's been overtaken by natural habitats for other creatures that may be disrupted by these buildings and the activity that's going to take place. In terms of the fact that there will be less activity than a rural site, I think, given all that's been said about the access of sustainable transport, and it won't be walking, because we can hear it won't be walking, if people are living there, they will be going in and out with their car to go shopping, to go to schools, to go to doctors, to do all the things that people do, which is far more than a tractor does when it goes in and out of a field a few times a year to do what it has to do. So I don't think that that comparison bears scrutiny. The, I won't go in further into the sustainable transport, that's been covered very well by the people who've spoken. I think one of the big issues, I am very concerned about highways issues, and know that although highways have said they've approved this, what we know is that this site comes out onto a 60 mile an hour road with limited vision, and I think a comment was made, we need to cut back a bit of that so they can see. But again, if we're looking at trips in cars coming in and out of that, and big caravans that are going to move in and out on a regular basis, there is, to me, a definite issue about road safety, the visibility, the speed of the road, and all the things that people have mentioned in their objections. Lastly, I want to go to strategic considerations. I think it's very disappointing that Chelmsford City Council planning has not adequately provided within the local plan for the travellers and gypsies. Why we do this is, in terms of housing as well, to stop speculative development, now called in this windfall. What we have, because we haven't made adequate provision, is we're shoehorning stuff in to make it fit so that we have accommodation for people that we should be providing within our strategic plan in a proper, measured way, which provides all the things that should be necessary for their wellbeing and all the other things. We have a local plan currently going under consultation. Surely it would be better to look at that provision and make sure that that is catered for rather than relying on this. And in terms of the concern about things growing, if we don't do that, and we have set a precedent by putting something on an agricultural site in a green area, not in keeping with the locals, we are very much in danger of that spreading. There is land either side of this that's currently up for sale, and I personally would be very concerned that, having given approval for this, for all the reasons that have been articulated tonight, that we may be in danger of of spreading that further, which I think would be a shame for the area and not in keeping at all with the area that people live in. I have nothing more to say, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much, councillor Jeeps. I'll invite the officer to come back on that, and I'll also invite the highways officer to come back and feel the points as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. In terms of comments made about, you know, facts being known by local residents, I don't disagree, and that is the purpose of local consultation as part of planning applications, we we seek the views of local residents so that we can factor those into to our assessments. I do apologise, I'm not sure which which four or five categories in the MPPF we're saying this doesn't follow. But also, this this links to the the concerns that we've heard about trying to make this application fit with policy, and I think it's useful just to recap on what the the tilted balance in the MPPF does say. And that that paragraph in the MPPF, the tilted balance, applies where we're not able to demonstrate an up-to-date five-year supply, and that paragraph does introduce a presumption in favour of development where there are no strong reasons for refusing or adverse impact. So that is the the National Planning Policy Framework seeking to deliver the development that is needed. We're instructed by the National Planning Policy Framework to take a positive view of development unless there are strong reasons for refusing, which in this case we don't think there are. In terms of councillor Jeeps' points about the previous use of the land and agricultural use, would this be any different if the land was undeveloped? In the report, we have accepted that the land is not previously developed land, so that that essentially means we are considering this from a a greenfield perspective, we are not taking account of previously developed land. So that that's dealt with in the report, and personally, I don't think the outcome would be any difference if different if it was a greenfield. Just on that point, in terms of the concerns about where does this stop and potentially land being up for sale, the Planning Policy for Traveller Sites, National Planning Policy, does include policies about assessing the cumulative impact of traveller sites on an area. So this comes back to my point that all applications are assessed on their own merit, and just because one is potentially granted planning permission or delivered, it does not necessarily that it mean that it's a free-for-all and it can keep going and going and going. We would then need to consider the cumulative impact. In terms of highways, I think I can probably just address this, to be honest. If you if you then want our highways colleague to to come back and provide any further information, I'm sure he can do. As planning officers, we seek the views of Essex County councillors, the local highway authority, they are the expert consultancy on highways matters, and they have advised us that the proposed development is acceptable. There are no concerns in terms of highway safety, we are guided by that, and my advice is that a refusal of planning permission on highways grounds, contrary to our local highway authorities' view, would potentially be troublesome from an appeal perspective. In terms of ecology and the concerns raised from councillor Jeeps, a preliminary ecological appraisal was submitted as part of the application, that has been assessed by our natural environment team, and we have reviewed that, assessed that, agree with the recommendations, that's been appropriately provided by by a suitably qualified person, and we are recommending conditions which would include compliance with recommendations in that preliminary ecological appraisal, such as back boxes, bird boxes, staged vegetation clearance. The proposed development would retain the area of the front of the land, which is scrub, and an area at the rear of the site which is is bramble scrub, and also there is sufficient space within the site to provide at least 10% biodiversity net gain. My expectation or my view would be that it's probably very easy to achieve more than 10% on this site, and also we've we've got plans that show native hedge planting and three native new trees, so we think that is acceptable. The final point that I want to cover is councillor Jeeps' concern about the provision of Gypsy and traveller pitches within Chelmsford and the work that has been done and sites that have been allocated. If I can just put up a slide, I'll briefly talk you through the numbers, if that might help. Let's just down a couple. So our GTAA in 2024 found that we have a need for 44 pitches. Our five-year need is 24 pitches, so over the next five years, we should be delivering 24 pitches. Our local plan allocates 30 pitches, but that's not in our five-year period. We've delivered or are delivering four pitches. That brings our total kind of planned or delivered pitches to 34, which still gives us an unmet or unallocated need of 10 pitches. Although this is one pitch, that would that would make a fair dent in our need of 10 pitches. But also, in terms of whether we have made an adequate provision in the local plan, a bit of background on the definition of Gypsy and travellers. A couple of years ago now, there was a court case, so there is case law, and that essentially changed the definition of who meets the the planning policy for for travellers' definition of a traveller. There's a lot of traveller in that sentence, and I do apologise, it gets slightly complicated. Essentially, this this decision broadened the definition of those people that meet the definition of being a traveller. So that significantly, across the country, increased need for Gypsy and traveller pitches. Every authority is is pretty much in the same situation. You had a definition one day and a different definition the next, essentially, which meant that a lot more people fell into the definition of being a Gypsy or traveller and therefore needing to have their accommodation needs met. So in terms of our local plan review, we have allocated all the land that we possibly can, we went through a call for sites process to try and gather any sites that could be promoted for Gypsy and traveller pitches. Allocating 30 in our local plan is as as good as we can can deliver right now, and that is largely a result of that change in the definition. So I think it it's not that Chelmsford City Council have not provided sufficient pitches, it's that definition change hit every local authority across the country pretty hard, if I'm honest. I think that's it from me on those points.
Thank you very much. Before we open up to the committee, sorry, would you have got a point to come back on there? I'll allow you to.
The question I asked was, is it possible to take a site visit?
That is something that the committee will discuss. If someone proposes that, there will be a vote on it, but that is in the list of possibilities that we can choose from. Sorry, public question time has finished now, so no more questions from the public, thank you. So, yeah, before we go to the committee, I've got a few questions I'd like to ask officers. This is an exceedingly easy one. There were comments suggested that you hadn't visited the site, I'm sure you have.
Yes, we know the area very well.
Yep. Could you, are there any slides to show, there's the shielding to the north of the tall conifer trees, is there any specific shielding around the two caravans and the dayhouse, and is that conditioned? Because I think on the overhead plan, you could see a green line going around there, but obviously that's not indicative of the height of any fencing or greenery.
Hopefully, this slide helps, so you can see there would be hedging around the majority of the area where the caravans would be. Obviously, it's a little bit difficult to provide that hedging towards the southern boundary because of how you would need to take access from the track into the pitch. But yes, we do have conditions for a site development scheme which would require details of of planting as well as any fences, gates, et cetera.
And that condition would include the height of it?
The height of head, the height of fencing walls, gates, yes, we can require the height of. We cannot require hedging to be maintained at a certain height. We can require details of planting in terms of the number of hedging plants, whips, whether it's a double staggered row and the spacing, we can require that much detail, but we can't specify it must be maintained at at two metres or something like that. A hedge is a hedge.
Thank you. To confirm, I'm sure there was, I went through the report a few days ago, the there is a condition for, it's one static, one torah, and the dayroom, and if any, if anything else were to go on the site, that would require planning permission?
That's correct. Condition number four sets out your caravan limit, so that's a total of two caravans, no more than one can be a static. If there were any more caravans, that would be a breach of condition for which we can take planning enforcement action if needed.
Thank you. Let's go back a few pages, see if I've got any other questions at this stage. I think they've all been covered in the report or from answers to questions previously. I'd like to open this up to the committee, do you have any questions or queries? councillor Highland?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask our Essex County Council officer a question. Aggressing from that site with a caravan in tow from a static or very slow-moving pace onto a 60 mile an hour road, is that sustainable? Is that a risk to anybody else on that 60 mile an hour? Is that a risk to anybody else on that 60 mile an hour road?
In terms of the vehicle movements to the site, it's my understanding that static caravans will not be reg, just, excuse me, will not be, there will not be multiple movements of static caravans in and out of that access. The access is existing, it had an agricultural use, you would have expect, as part of that agricultural use, there would be slow-moving vehicles entering and egressing that. There could be mowers, it could be any other equipment like that. That would be a similar type of movement. The site accident record, the ECC personal injury collision record has been consulted on this, has been checked and there have been no recorded incidents along that stretch in the vicinity of that access. So there is no, there's no causation for accidents there that need to be addressed. In terms of the access itself, I'd like to get on to that, the site has not been in use for many years and I think that's acknowledged by everybody. And as a result, the highway verge has become overgrown. As part of the consideration, I did note that and I have included in a strong suggestion that that is cleared. It is the responsibility of the adjacent landowners and the highway authority to clear that, but I would suggest that the applicant, as part of the work to make the site, to develop the site, would clear the visibility displays back to where they should be.
Would you like to come back on anything there?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that response. So you're clearly stating there's no accident evidence, but common sense would say that a vehicle coming out at that speed onto a 60 mile an hour road would cause traffic, congestion, everyone slowing down or, is it a single track or is it a double track? They'd have to move out to a second track in order to safely pass that junction? Just, does that make sense to ask that question or am I off-piste?
If I made it, if I made the, the visibility from that access, once the foliage has been cleared, would be good. Now, just because it's a 60 mile an hour road doesn't mean that vehicles would necessarily be travelling at 60 miles an hour. That road is, has got a de-restricted speed limit, but drivers would drive according to the conditions. There's always a lunatic out there who will drive too fast, I accept that, but we're not here to mitigate against that. By and large, the speeds along there would be reasonable and commensurate with the giving the, approaching vehicles as well as emerging vehicles, the chance to see whether it is safe to emerge from that access.
Thank you. Do we have a slide showing this area from above, a sort of satellite image?
Sorry, I'll just add one thing.
Yes.
In terms of Google Street View is a very useful means of actually looking at historically what the access has looked like and that goes back to 2009. And you can see, if you go back on Street View to 2009, visibility along there, the hedging was all faced back. That was likely due to the fact that the site was in use. And as I said, the site has clearly not been in use and so nobody has actually paid attention to keeping that clear. Thank you.
So to clarify, looking at that, there are multiple other similar access points onto this road, would that be correct to say? Okay, thank you. Councillor Highland?
So would it be a potential to put a condition that that road is made more safe for exit and entry on the applicant? Would that be a condition that we could enforce?
What sort of condition were you proposing?
So make sure that the visibility display is safe and accessible to, and if you talk about Google Earth a couple of years back, maybe that would be a reference point for the parties involved. And I understand that you mentioned there are a number of parties involved, so it would be a condition on the developer, but then he'd have to get permission, I guess, of other landowners or collaboration.
Do you want me to?
Yes, please.
In principle, we can put a condition on requiring vegetation to be removed or faced back to provide a visibility display. We cannot require works on third-party's land by condition. So all we could do would be require amendments, work to be carried out on the land that is within the ownership of the applicant and the highway authority, which is likely to be that very immediate front section of the access. Whether or not that would, that would actually overcome the predominant concerns because you wouldn't be going further than, further than that access, you know, it's difficult to tell. The highway authority, their view is that the access is acceptable without the need to face that back, but we can add a condition if that's something that members would like, but only relating to the land owned by the applicant. And what I'd suggest is that we could require details of works to be carried out to that access, to be submitted to the planning authority and we could review those. Just picking up, I think we addressed it earlier, but just on the point of moving static caravans in and out of the site, like we've heard, that is rare, that's not, that's not common, that's not going to be occurring every day. The static stays on the site, essentially. It, you know, it would potentially be tricky to manoeuvre it in there, but that's possibly no different to having a large delivery to any other residential property. You know, if you're getting a furniture delivery, that's quite often troublesome on a normal two-way street. So it would be a very short time that there would be an impact.
Thank you. Councillor Highland again?
Thank you, Chair. So you talked about the Essex highways authorities being sought to collaborate. Is that, can we place a condition on this planning against the highways authority?
Would you like to come back on that?
So due to the highway authority to maintain the verges and that's what they do, they do, they have a cutting schedule, which is implemented every year.
But as you noted yourself, if you look at Google Earth a few years back and now, it obviously hasn't been kept. Could, so the question is, is there a legal precedent to put a condition on the highways authorities to do works to ensure the safe use of that road?
We can't require the highway authority to carry out works, but the applicant could clear vegetation around that access point, even if it is on highway land. So we can't put a condition on saying Essex County councillors, the highway authority must clear it. I mean, my suggestion would be, and I think this comes through from the consultation response from the highway authority, that maybe an informative is added to strongly recommend that that is carried out. That overcomes any issue of third-party land ownership, but it does, you know, strongly indicate you should remove any foliage within your control to get suitable visibility.
Sorry, suggesting that informative would be on the applicant's or on Essex County council, I'm sorry, I missed that.
It would be an informative on the planning decision and that would be an informative directed at the applicant when carrying out works. You are, it's strongly recommended that you face back any vegetation.
So why can't we have that as a condition?
You can have it as a condition, but given that we don't really think that it's necessary, an informative would probably be better.
Okay.
I mean, you can do it as a condition, but I think an informative delivers the same message, clear what you can, that's whatever is in your control.
Okay, and highways had said it was okay as it is.
Yeah.
So, yes, okay. Councillor Dobson?
Thank you, Chair. Been making lots of notes, et cetera, on this. I would just start by saying that I do live in the vicinity of this site and I have done for about 30-odd years. I have run this past a monitoring officer and she is happy that I do, that I continue to do that. I just wanted just to mention that at the beginning. I'm somewhat uncomfortable with the sustainability of this application. Going, starting off obviously with DM3 and I know that point A2 says it's got to be a reasonable travelling distance. But taking that once, you know, for several steps back, I've been looking, obviously reading through firstly the NPPF, which of course, it's overriding, sort of golden thread, if you like, was the presumption in favour of sustainable development. I mean, the NPPF obviously is the top planning document that is in operation. And reading alongside that, I've been looking at the planning policy, NPPF planning policy for traveller sites. And certainly in paragraph 24 of that, and I should read, "Applications should be assessed and determined in accordance with the presumption of favour of sustainable development." Now, I get the issue as far as the tilted balance and I appreciate that this does make things, if all things being equal, it would be, there is a presumption in granting planning permission on that. But my feeling is, as I say, certainly reading the national planning policies, they are the overriding policies that everything else has to comply with. And again, looking at our own local plans, strategic policy S1, bullet point three, again reconfirms that locate development at well-connected and sustainable locations. Now, I take the point, I think the planning officers have made with regard to GNT sites invariably are not in, you know, in sustainable locations, but I think that's more often the fact of is that Gypsy and travellers often have livestock, certainly, you know, horses and certainly it tends to be on agricultural land or open greenfield land because the cost of the land to acquire is a lot, is obviously a lot cheaper. I'm very uncomfortable with the fact that this application is not in a sustainable location with regard to national planning policy, our own spatial policy, and I'm not minded to support this application on that basis. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Hall?
Thanks, Chair. Can I get into some detail? I'm looking at the map here and I want to understand the nature of these adjacent buildings or buildings that are in the vicinity. Can we just go through and understand what each of those buildings are, whether they are private dwelling places or their barns or their temporary buildings? Are you able to perhaps fill in that detail?
I can try my hardest. Do you, what map is best, is that aerial best to refer to? I'm just, what do you want me to look at?
Where I'm getting the grey blocks is in the map that's in the material.
Okay.
So it would be good to get a definition of those and the second part of it really is, it's obviously got the green screening on here. Have you got views of the site from existing residencies? Can we see if it's, I know you mentioned in the notes that it is not visible, but is there any sort of views of that that we could look at?
I mean, we haven't got photographs from nearby residential properties. We've got the photographs that I've provided in the presentation that really show the site from its most visible perspectives. You can see the site, I'm not saying that the site is completely hidden, you can see it, but those views are from the immediate surroundings, they are not from further afield. Again, the development is low level and there is screening, so we're not saying that you won't see it, but that in itself is not harmful and that's not the test, the test is significant adverse impact.
Can we, can we look at the buildings then to just see what buildings immediately are next to the site?
Try this one. Is this, is this the map that you want to look at?
That's the one, yeah. So you've got two buildings, as you come into the site, there's two buildings on the right-hand side as you're going into the site, start with them and then just work through.
That's a residence property.
So the entrance to the site is within the red line, the bit that juts out onto Butts Green Road?
Yes. So if you're coming down there, let's say we're walking down there, on the right-hand side, as you're coming in, there's two blocks there, two grey blocks. What are those buildings?
I don't even, if we get the aerial photograph, I don't even think they are buildings, if I'm honest. So this is the aerial photograph, so you can just, can you see them on that aerial photograph? They may be kind of little domestic sheds, if anything, they're not significant buildings.
I think it's important.
We know, we know the R2, that one property is.
If someone has a definitive answer, I'm happy to let it be clarified.
Hi, I'm Veronica Sullivan, who lives at the gatehouse, which is adjacent to Holy Tunnel Lad. The front paddock where you saw those two buildings was temporary caravans that we lived in while we had permission to build the gatehouse, and are now no longer there, so you've just got the blank front paddock.
Right, so this map is not to date?
Correct, that was in 2020.
The latest showing on Google Earth shows absolutely nothing there.
So they're not, those two rectangles above the site on that paddock land, see, where you've got LB on that, if we look slightly below the LB and you've got the two grey rectangles, I think they're the ones you're referring to.
Yes.
They're not buildings, they're, they're just on this plan.
So they're not buildings?
No.
They don't exist?
But there's no, but there's no new building on that site?
No.
So it's an open field?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make one more point, please?
Sure.
The track where you took the picture of the hedgerow, that natural hedgerow is actually our conifer trees on our land.
Yeah, we're aware of that.
And the track is our track, it's on our land, so there's no, there's nothing that hides the track of that site, the nursery, it's just an open three-bar gap, three-bar fencing.
Okay.
Thank you.
And also, the buildings that are come on there, they are just, it's a temporary like, port cabin, no commercial standing whatsoever.
Councillor Hall, is there anything you'd like to come back on there?
Well, just really, I'm trying to get some detail of the picture. Clearly there's a difference there in, that's not reflected currently. You know, it's a very delicate process in terms of assessing this and I want to make sure that we've got the right knowledge of what's sitting there. If we move on then, so we've established that those buildings aren't there, if we move on to the actual area that's adjacent, the proposed site, we've got wayside, is wayside a residential property?
Yes.
Okay, and the grey area just south of that, is that a garage or a barn or?
Councillor Hall, can I clarify that for you? On Google Earth, the, above the word track, there's sort of a grey rectangle. On Google Earth, the, above the word track, there's sort of a grey rectangular vertical block, that is not there. The large grey block at an angle to the left of the word track is not there. The rest of it, the top left, I wouldn't say that was there either, to be honest.
Can I just clarify, sorry? I'm trying to help you understand what is where. So where we were looking at the gatehouse and councillor Lee was saying the gatehouse, you've got the building that's at the, almost like a forty-five degree angle to the site? Is that one that you're asking about? So there was planning permission for a garage building to be there, so my understanding is that that is a garage building. There we go.
When was that view image taken, do you know? Because that's different from the...
I don't know when this one was taken, to be honest. I would say it's fairly recently because my understanding is that the planning permission for that garage building was within the last couple of years.
And then there's the block in between, where it says wayside and that garage, there's a block there as well. Is that a current building? The nature of?
Sorry, so where it says the gatehouse and then...
So you've got the gatehouse, the garage that you've just explained got planning permission, you've got wayside as a residential property, there is a grey block in the middle of those two.
The L-shaped building?
No, no, it's just a rectangle.
I don't think anything is there, to be honest.
There's nothing there.
No.
There's nothing there.
But it's not accurate.
Sorry, can we not have public interruptions? If we have a query that we do not believe that we can understand, then we may ask you, but thank you. Councillor Hall.
So, you know, I'm just trying to get the picture really and that was really my thinking behind, how close is this proposal to the houses? And, you know, just to sort of mitigate some of the points in terms of noise, light and various other things. I'm still not undecided, to be honest, but I just wanted to get those points, you know, and understand them. Thank you.
Councillor Sampson.
Thanks. So my concern is a bit more of a big picture one than a detail one. So with the change of use, we do see quite a lot of change of use applications come, you know, you see farmers diversifying into glamping and solar and lots of other types of building, many of which are approved because it's private land and we overall think it's a benefit even though it's a loss of agricultural land. So this kind of falls into that bracket. I think the difference here is, you know, that benefit that we get as kind of residents of Chelmsford, it feels very limited. And I do think that there could be a precedent that, you know, it's private land, he's got two caravans and he might come back and say, I want two more, et cetera, et cetera. So I do understand the residents' concern about precedent there from going from nothing to something. I think, so that's on the side of being minded kind of not to approve. However, I think what we're hearing from the officers is really the chance of this being overturned at appeal is quite high, mostly because of the tilting balance. And as we've heard, that was put upon us by central government, nothing to do with anyone in this room, it wasn't because we weren't organised with a local plan, it was because things changed kind of overnight. So I do understand a lot of concern as to why this change of use, you know, in a lot of other scenarios, I don't think it would be approved, in this particular scenario and especially given that it's a non-permanent structure, so you can, and it's only for traveller sites, so it's not, you know, it could go back to a greenfield again much more easily than if we were putting another type of house or another type of commercial business on it. However, with the tilting balance and the fact that we have got those ten pitches unfulfilled in any other way, I think the chances of it being overturned at appeal is really likely, which means even if everyone, if we are minded to refuse that change of use today, that might not stick, I think. And that's a really, really difficult thing to weigh up as committee members because we're kind of looking into the future and thinking about appeal and all of that. But I'm not quite sure where I fall on it, but, you know, I think that, for me, the other things in terms of, you know, traffic, sustainability, for me it's not a concern. People live in rural areas, people have cars, they turn onto busy roads all the time, that's all very normal. It's just that kind of, that change of use with the pros and cons being tricky. It's not really a question.
Yeah, I would agree. But we, yeah, we don't want to preempt, it's what a planning inspector may decide, but also we don't want to give members of the public false hope if it were to be appealed. Councillor Bats.
Yeah, thank you Chair, I just wanted to follow on from the point about tilted balance. So I understand there have been at recent appeals where inspectors have refused permission for gypsy and traveller sites, where there is no five-year land supply for pitches, citing harm to landscape and countryside character for substantial reasons for refusal. I just say that because it wasn't mentioned in the presentation, although it was referenced, the tilted balance in favour of approval. So in balance therefore, I'm just wondering how much weight the committee should give to this issue of the five-year land supply? Because practically, it does appear that other factors frequently are found to outweigh the issue of the five-year supply. Also want to talk about the agricultural status of the lands and the fact it's not previously developed. Has there been any assessment of the quality of the agricultural lands? Because in the NPPF, it does direct local authorities to protect higher-grade agricultural land, so I just wondered if you could comment on that. Risk of precedent has been talked about quite a bit, should the application be approved? So are we definitive then? Could approval of this site on agricultural land in arguable breach of policy DM3 and not allocated for gypsy and traveller sites in the local plan? Could that potentially, if approved, strengthen similar applications? Maybe not set a precedent, but could it strengthen similar applications in rural and semi-rural areas? And finally, sorry, another point, the applicant's needs, it was talked about as well, has that actually been assessed? I wasn't really clear, maybe you did give the answer, sorry, but I didn't hear it. Is, so if the applicant is already resident somewhere else, how can there be necessity of need? I don't really understand that point. Thank you.
Officers come back on that please, thank you.
Thank you. In terms of the tilted balance and appeals being dismissed, you will find appeals that go both ways. This is always a matter of whether the benefits outweigh the harms. If appeals have been dismissed even where there is no five-year land supply, my guess would be that there are quite significant harms there that justify dismissing an appeal. In Chelmsford, we have had appeals that have found Chelmsford to have or to be lacking in a five-year supply and therefore granted temporary planning permission for travelling showman plots in the green wedge outside of Brumfield. So we have already had an appeal that has been partly granted on the basis that not have, of us not having a five-year supply. Slightly different circumstances though, because that is travelling showman and this is gypsy traveller. But you'll get appeal decisions either way. In terms of the agricultural status of the land for a development of this size, we don't need to consider the quality of the agricultural land, you would only require that with major and more strategic developments of a significant size. And in terms of potential reasons for approval and whether that sets a precedent in itself, it wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't be the decision which would set the precedent, it is the fact that this council cannot currently demonstrate a five-year supply, that is common knowledge, that's published. We do have challenges on that and applications made on that basis, so granting planning permission on that basis is not introducing any new material into, you know, into the realms of weighing and supporting applications. You'll continue to get applications on the basis of five-year land supply regardless, essentially. And just on personal circumstances, we don't need to know the personal circumstances of the intended occupier, nor do we need to know who exactly the intended occupier is. All that we would require is that they meet the definition of a gypsy and traveller, which is a fairly broad definition now. So we don't need to know who is going to live there, where they live at the moment, that's not what we're considering as part of this application.
Thank you, are you happy that's been covered? Thank you. Councillor Lodge.
Thank you Chair. So I did write down questions, but they have all basically been answered already, so it's more of a comment that I'm giving, I mean, an explanation of where my thinking is. So when we're talking about local need, I think lots of residents talked about them not being local need, but when we're making that decision, when I'm thinking about it, it's a more district-wide consideration of what local need is. And across the whole district, there is a need for this type of site. When it comes to that kind of adverse impact of the application, if you're living local to it, then it will be a change, I think that's clear. And it's then, is it a significant, you know, adverse impact? And as we heard, that's a high bar. And in my view on it would be that actually one static caravan, one touring caravan and a dayroom that is shielded as well by hedging isn't that needing that significant bar. So yes, there'll be an impact and it will be different to what it is now, but I don't think that is a reason, or that is a significant enough reason to refuse the application. I also agree about sustainability of the site not being great. You will have to drive everywhere, that's not ideal, but again, I can see that that again isn't a significant enough problem to refuse the application, in my view. I think, I'd written down something about the occupier, but we've just discussed that, that I don't think that factors into our decision as a planning committee because we don't think about who's going to live in any of the homes that we approve or refuse. It is simply, is this building acceptable or not? In terms of, it was brought up a lot, how many people have objected to this? And I can appreciate that from a residence point of view, that feels like it should have a really significant impact on the decision, but we aren't here to make an opinion-based decision about whether we like it or not. We are here to make a decision about, in planning law and in planning terms, is this an acceptable development? And in my view, if I look at it, it is dispassionate, which I fully appreciate, people sitting in the gallery, you're not going to look at this dispassionately, but that, yes, it is. And so, as I say, there are concerns about it, but I don't think they're significant enough in my view to vote against it, so I'm minded to approve it unless anyone has anything particularly persuasive to say from this point. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Lodge. I think there's one thing that we as a committee always faced with and that's that word significant. It is a very high bar. Yes, development will always change things, but it's hard to get to that high bar that is set by legislation as to what significant is. Councillor Vasconia.
Hi, most of my questions have also been answered and again, it's more of a comment, but I do agree with everything that councillor Sampson said, that I'm torn between really not being happy about the change of use, especially in view of the other local residents have applied for things and they've been refused and yet this is accepted, that were potentially accepted. And I can see how frustrating that must be. And also being told that it doesn't matter whether the applicant is from the area or local, but it's, they just have to meet this criteria. And I'm a bit confused really about, I mean, I take the point that we don't ask who's living in the house, but the whole point, houses that we build, but the whole point is that this site is supposedly for, to meet the requirements of the gypsy and traveller policy and yet we're told it doesn't matter, we don't need to know anything about that person. But if they're... Clearly we do need to know surely whether they meet that criteria, whether they are gypsy in that category. And another point, would the application be more acceptable, would it be viable without the dayroom? Because that is a permanent structure, which is a more permanent change of use than caravans, for example.
Thank you councillor Vasconia. I believe you obviously could answer the question about the gypsy traveller. With regards to the dayroom, obviously we're looking at the application that is in front of us, so we have to include it. I'll come back to you in a moment. I'm going to come back on the, there's a condition with regards to who lives there, isn't there?
Yeah, I'll just pick up on the need points again. So we have a need for a certain amount of gypsy and traveller pitches within Chelmsford. That is no different to how we have a need for a certain amount of houses within Chelmsford, we're just talking about different scale of numbers. Our housing need is significantly greater than our need for gypsy and traveller pitches. Like councillor Lodge has said, we don't require details of who is living in bricks and mortar housing. Essentially, any houses granted planning permission contribute towards meeting that need and the same would go for a gypsy and traveller pitch. If planning permission was granted for even one gypsy and traveller pitch, that's making up ten percent of the pitches that we need over the plan period that are unallocated. We have a condition, condition number three, which requires any occupier to meet the definition, but that is as far as we need to go. We don't need to know who the family is and where they have come from. We have a need for gypsy and traveller pitches, the same way in which we deliver housing to meet our identified need.
Thank you, councillor Watson.
Thank you Chair, it's really just picking up on the fact that this is just one family of gypsy and travellers that we're looking at here. And, I mean, I've been on this council many years and have seen applications like this come through for ten pitches, eleven pitches, however many across the rural areas around Chelmsford, and they always do provoke local reaction. There is this, unfortunately, I think, the gypsy traveller community, unfortunately, yeah, people see them in various different lights and not all of them favourably. What I would ask though is, this setup here, the fact that you've got a dayroom, you're going to have a touring caravan and you're going to have a static caravan for the family essentially to live in, is that particularly typical? I think I know the answer, but I think, is that particularly typical of a single family pitch?
Yeah, it is. You typically see one static, one tourer and the dayroom for kitchen bathroom.
Councillor Highland.
Thanks Chair. On page twenty-two, one of the comments made by our residents was the omission of vacant pitches on private family sites. Are we clear that our local plan is correctly calculating the available sites to gypsy travellers?
Yes, we've been through the numbers many times. As part of my role, I also lead twice yearly count of gypsy and traveller caravans that we undertake in January and in July across the county. we undertake in January and in July across the county. So we know how many caravans, which pitches we have, which ones are occupied, which ones we are delivering. Yes, so confident we know what the need is and what our supply is.
So but my specific question was about the the private family pitches that are allegedly vacant, according to the residents' commentary here. Are they included in your numbers?
Yeah, we do public and private and unauthorised sites. Yeah, all of them.
Any further questions? councillor Clark.
Not so much a question, more a comment. I am quite reassured with the number of conditions that are applied, particularly the environmental ecological biodiversity conditions. And I note that some of those conditions, there'll be no residential occupation until they've been complied with, and we've heard that the applicant is happy to comply with those. That's really is the main comment. The only other minor comment was to do with highways when that was discussed. And I just was going to suggest that there could be a concealed entrance sign along that stretch of road to prevent any potential incidents of vehicles coming out of that site. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments anyone would like to make? I think that's been quite a thorough discussion. I don't think we've ever had a case where so many of us have spoken in this committee. So thank you for your contributions. On that note, I move to the substantive motion. I move that application 25 slash 01 046 slash full, the old nursery butts green road sand and Chelmsford CM two seven RN be approved, subject to the conditions detailed on pages 30 to 34 of the agenda pack and also with the addition of an informative with regards to foliage at the entrance. Do I have a second? councillor Lodge, all those in favour of approving the application, please raise your hands? Thank you. All those not in favour of approving the application, raise your hands? Thank you. And all of those abstaining, please raise your hands? No abstentions? Okay, so that's carried. Okay, the application has been approved. Thank you. We have agenda item eight. We'll have a few moments while the public leave and councillor Dobson takes my place. Thank you all. We had this one good point.
Very close to it.
So shall we, we'll we'll move on, even though there's people are still leaving, but let's, I I believe we should move on. The next item is item eight, which is application number 24 00775 stroke S73 10 Molsham Chase, Chelmsford Essex, CM two zero TB. Could we have the planning officers' report please?
Yes, thank you Chair. Can you hear me okay? As you can see here, the application site is connoted by the the red line. The red dot indicates the the property that is subject to the application. It's as you can see, it's an established residential street scene, a mixture of property types, bungalows along Fraser Close and more sort of established two store properties along Molsham Chase and the surrounding area like Amco's Place. As you can also see, there's a collection of sort of residential outbuildings scattered among gardens there from from the aerial. Moving on to the next plan, as you can see here from a from the top down on the site plan, it's a retrospective application for for an outbuilding at the at the end of the garden. That's just marked by the the yellow outline there. The approximate, well, the the main consideration here is in relation to to number two Fraser Close. The approximate distance between the two properties or the the application building and two Fraser Close is 3.1 metres to the rear. That's connoted by the the line on the right hand side there. And then the approximate distance to to number nine Molsham Chase, just to the north, is approximately six metres. That's connoted by the line on the left hand side of that plan. Just to note that with number two Fraser Close, the the closest window to number two Fraser Close of the out of the outbuilding serves a garage and a utility room. So the closest window of number two, again, roughly to where the line is drawn to on the right hand side, little purple line, serves a garage and a utility room. I can show some pictures of that as we kind of go through the presentation. As you can see here, the on the left hand side is just the 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 front elevation plan of the of the building. The wording on the left there just takes you through a little bit of the history of the site. Planning commission was granted in 2024 for for an outbuilding with a height of 2.5 metres. Subsequently later on that year, we granted a non material amendment to increase the height by 0.3 metres to a height of 2.8. And then, as we can see with the section 73 application, we've got currently a seeking retrospective permission to increase the height to 3.1 metres and install solar panels to the roof. The picture on the right hand side there just shows the 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 building under construction. You know, the proposed use of the, the footprint, sorry, is unchanged from each of the applications. So the actual spread of the building is the same. The only difference here is is the height. The use is proposed for the outbuilding, just to give you a flavour for that, again, unchanged from the previous application. That's for a games room, a home office and a store, ordinary ancillary uses within an urban area. And then, again, also just to deal with the solar panels, again, not uncommon in a domestic setting. As you might be aware as well, with some other applications that have come to committee, the MPPF recognises that even small renewable projects can contribute towards battling the carbon footprint. Moving on to the next slide. Didn't realise there was an animation in there. These are some, two pictures taken from the garden of number two Fraser Close, just to give you a flavour of the size of the building and proximity to the nearest neighbour. So this is the one on the left, well, both on the left and the right are just sort of standing generically in the centre point of the patio area. You know, the external servicing of the outbuilding, it is timber cladding, the the lighting of the picture is a little bit, a little bit tempting there. It is not actually a darker sort of more modern cladding, it is just timber cladding. And the lighting's a bit unfavourable there with those pictures. And just again, position wise, this is me standing in front of the the kitchen window and the the sitting room window of number two Fraser Close. Just to give you a flavour of distance, the outbuilding's located approximately 5.6 metres away from the kitchen window. And you'll sort of see from the next pictures, that's roughly where they are in relation to the property. On the right hand side there, you can see that the window on the closest to the outbuilding on the left hand side, it just serves a garage slash utility room. And the kitchen window is more centrally located on the property on the right hand side there. And that's the 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 window that's located about 5.6 metres away from from the outbuilding. The picture on the left hand side there just gives you an idea of the size of the garden for number two Fraser Close. It's quite a deep garden, it's well landscaped, there's established timber fencing there, close board timber fence, about 1.8 metres, which is your standard, you know, domestic domestic height. Moving on to the next slide. And there's a couple of pictures from inside number two Fraser Close. The picture on the right hand side is obviously from the from the kitchen. And that was obviously shown around about, again, the building is about 5.6 metres away from that window. And then the picture on the left hand side is from the sitting room. The the sitting room is a lot further away and the window generally directs the views down the rear of the garden. You you know, you do have to quite crook your neck to 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 get the the view of the of the outbuilding from that window. So it is very much more so the garage and the the kitchen that have a little bit more of relationship. Again, you can see that the the outbuilding is visible. It is a structure, it is there, you will see it. But given the size of the garden and the context and the urban setting, visibility doesn't automatically equal harm. And we're satisfied that that the outbuilding in this particular instance, you know, isn't harmful to the neighbour relationship. And then just to to round off, you know, the planning officers are satisfied that the design of the the outbuilding remains acceptable. Again, that's from more or less unchanged, apart from the height increase and the addition of the solar panels. And also, we're content that the relationship with neighbours is acceptable. And therefore Chair, we are recommending approval.
Right, thank you very much. There are no parish council or members of the public present or wish to answer your questions, so I'll open it straight to the committee, to the members to ask any questions. If anyone would like to start. Don't all speak at once. Any questions? councillor Armstrong.
Obviously, it's very disappointing retrospective applications. Obviously, that's part of the process, especially when planning had been granted twice. So it was sort of known. Where the person from number two's garden, they've clearly put a lot of effort into their garden, real keen passion. And actually, you notice in the picture from the living room, that's where their desk's view was. It's clearly probably their main place of work or admin and stuff. So it is very disappointing that where the garden structure was approved at a height which wouldn't have been considerably above the current fence, that it now is a noticeable feature above. One of my questions, just to check, was the external material on it, was it cladded with a synthetic wood looking material? Or was it a wood so it would grey and have the ability to age like the fence to blend in better? It's it's also disappointing that it, not only have they raised it, they've then put the solar panels on top and very much four solar panels on, but there's obviously, there's no solar panels on the roof of the main building. And we could have considered a flat solar panel if this was coming as a new application, because that would have limited the extra from 3.1 to actually what will be probably 3.3 to the top of the panel. Which again, it adds 3.3 or I I could, there's no direct measurement unfortunately on those pictures, is actually very much more of a considerable increase to the original approved 2.8 than just what the 3.1 is. So it is a shame that it's been built and therefore there isn't the flexibility in that. But if I could just get comment on a few of those points on the synthetic material and that additional height of the solar panel.
Thank you.
My understanding councillor Armstrong, is that it is a it is a timber, a timber cladding, natural timber cladding rather than synthetic. I hope that answers your question. In regards to the solar panels, yes, they do obviously add a little bit of a little bit of height on, but I don't think we can necessarily take the view that a difference between 3.1 metres at the top height of the the outbuilding and 3.3 at the top of the solar panels is is really that significant enough of a of a difference to to really push back on that. You know, the 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 act allows us to deal with, you know, retrospective permissions in this way. And and I appreciate, you know, it is regrettable. But, you know, we've we've dealt with the application as it's come in. And on those those grounds, we've we've, you know, we do think it is okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? councillor Highland?
Yeah, retrospective is never my favourite either. The the height impact is a subjective, it depends on your perspective, right? And that additional height on the right hand side of their garden to the where we saw the photographs, I feel it has an overbearing impact on their neighbours. I'm I'm imagining that neighbour is now not going to use that right hand side of their garden, given that it's this shadow is cast above it. So I think it is a material impact on the neighbourhood, on that particular neighbour with this increasing height. I don't know if the applicant got any advice, sought any advice over the period of the planning requests, but I imagine if they did get advice, officers would be saying to them, here's the reasonable height. And then they've gone for another height. And I don't know if the it was retrospective first of all, in in this, was it, you know, did they ask for planning permission first and got, yeah, you can do the first one and then built it wrong? Or built it higher than expectations? I'm not quite sure of the trajectory of the history of the planning application, if you could make that bit clearer Tom.
First of all councillor, how we got to this point isn't really a planning consideration. They had a a planning permission for a height. They they sought a non material amendment to make it a little bit higher. And presumably, in the build out, it went a little bit higher again. And it was drawn to our attention and we said, that's not non material, it needs a new planning application. So that's why you've got the planning application. We would say that in that relationship on any site probably. The neighbour does notice it, but it's not overbearing. It's it's, there's plenty of occasions in 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 an urban context where you have outbuildings, garages, extensions, in that kind of location. The photographs, to be fair, don't, don't, it's much lighter in colour. The the wrong time of day and the sun reflecting on it. When I looked at them with Matt first time round, I thought, why on earth have they painted it black? That was my first reaction, but they haven't. It's just how the light's catching it. And the garden of the neighbour is big enough to get away from it. It simply isn't overbearing in in the planning context.
Yeah, I was interested in the commentary actually, that they were blaming the neighbour for having a large garden. You've got a large garden, you can get out of the way of our overcasting. So they're actually admitting that they were overcasting the garden. And as the kitchen is actually the centre of their home, I believe it should be afforded unfettered views. And I think their view is fettered in this occasion. My view.
councillor Armstrong.
Can I just clarify, in this change, the original proposal was not higher than the single story dwelling to the side. And now because of these changes, it will be higher than the kitchen section to the side.
Does that help councillor Armstrong? So the garage, the neighbour's garage and the rear window of their garage is closest to the fence and closest to the outbuilding. And then further away is the is their kitchen section.
So this this change has obviously taken it from what would have been equivalent level to their property to what is now 600, 700 mil higher, sort of, then not factoring the solar panels.
Any any further comments? Okay, in that case, I move that application 24 00775 stroke S73 10 Molsham Chase, Chelmsford Essex, CM two zero TB be approved. Do I have a second please? councillor Wilson, thank you. Will all those in favour of approving the application, please raise a hand? All those against? Any abstain? Have you got those? Right, in that case, the application has been approved. Next item is